All right, well, do I have a motion to come out of recess and to conclude the city council meeting for tonight?
Motion to come out of recess, continue.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero. Uh, let's see, we were moving on to K eleven, the parking surfaces discussion.
Good evening, we staff did a lot of research of other cities and MS four and our own ordinance, um, as well as our wellhead protection areas, um, and other water-related and surface-related statutes, I guess, um, and contacted directly our MS four representative just to confirm since handouts and everything are so contradictory. But the MS four permit he he did confirm does not specifically regulate vehicle parking surfaces, but the primary objective of the MS four permit is to prevent pollutants from reaching the city stormwater conveyance system, um, and eventually the surface water, so through previous staff, though previous staff had indicated much differently, the city does have the flexibility to make determination to allow parking vehicles on grass, pervious or impervious surfaces. It is recommended to not allow parking of vehicles, um, on grass to protect green space pervious area and to minimize any vehicle fluids, which is why it's specifically vehicles and not trailers, to prevent that from leaking into the soil and eventually the groundwater. Staff will need direction on a number of items prior to implementing any changes to this ordinance, uh, including zoning code changes, which will be need to be updated at the planning commission, um, through a public hearing, and this would then allow formal adoption to be held at the council and then, as well as ordinance two twenty-seven, Article three, will need to be amended to reflect any changes made by the council to parking and storage and updating definitions to meet current state and federal definitions for surfacing. Other topics we need to consider are that less impervious surface is recommended by the MPCA, so just overall, um, which we have increased that level through the zoning code. And reducing requirements often offers more flexibility for residents. Leaking vehicle fluids can cause issues for selling homes in the future, creating brownfield sites within the city, which are difficult to be cleaned up, and the city can require vehicles to be in good working condition without leaks. That is in our jurisdiction. We'd have to consider how many units would be allowed per yard and to be parked on an improved impervious surface. We currently allow four personal vehicles and up to five units in all residential zones, so a vehicle is counted as a unit, so it could be four vehicles plus one unit, which could be a trailer with two snowmobiles on it, but if the snowmobiles are not on the trailer, then that's three units, so it depends on how you have things grouped together in your yard. With the exception of the R one A zone, which is up to seven units. These are required to be on improved and impervious surfaces with the exception of the winter parking rule, which states the following, that non-motorized vehicles used to haul snowmobiles, ATVs and other recreational units, including the units or fish houses are permitted on all surfaces if placed a maximum of ten feet from the driveway during the timeframe of November first through March thirty-first only, um, and the weight is not to exceed ten thousand pounds. Then we also would need to consider if they'd be allowed to be parked in the front side and rear yards. Would the units need to be registered if they're in the yard parked, um, and would they need to be screened? If so, where in the yard would you require screening? Would this only be allowed in residential districts, or are we also considering industrial and commercial districts? And units would need to be parked outside of drainage and utility easements regardless of where in the yard they are allowed to park. So I did attach the current parking and storage ordi- ordinance for your reference.
Thank you, Stephanie. So I think, to me, I mean, I, if I could just kind of take the lead on this here a little bit and you guys kind of tell me if I'm wrong, but, essentially, I think if we basically just say, okay, we want to keep all of the rules that there are now, we want to have parking off to the side of the house, we want to have parking in the rear of the house, we want it to be, uh, screened when they're, then that's the case, and we we basically want all the same rules, we just don't want to force that it's on an impervious surface. I mean, it's Kurt, right? I was, I drove by your house today, I mean, what's wrong with where you've got that thing sitting? I mean, nothing, I mean, you've got a retaining wall there, I mean, it's it's made for that, right, so? Yeah. 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 You know, so I think all of the rules that basically apply now are fine, except for, they shouldn't be forced to put it on impervious surface. I think even, you know, Steve, you're concerned a lot of times about that, you know, leaking vehicles, I think we could maybe put some language in there that if the vehicle is leaking, that needs to be addressed or that needs to stay on impervious surface. But otherwise, you know, I think you basically could take that line thirteen, uh, B thirteen out and make that kind of the basis for the entire chapter and say, you know, we want it within, and if it's in the front yard, it has to be within ten feet of the im- uh, impervious surface of the driveway. Uh, otherwise, if it's in the side yard, rear yard, it has to be screened and it has to be, um, you know, parked off to the side, it can't be longer than the house, I mean, all that kind of stuff, I think, is fine. Except for, uh, it just shouldn't have to be forced to be on impervious surface, and then I would just make that section thirteen year round instead of just in the wintertime, so. Uh, so I think that if you kind of cut B one, cut B two, cut B seven, and then adjust B eight and B eleven and B thirteen, then I I think that'd be all that we need to change about this particular chapter, so.
So I have an interesting tidbit on this, up until about nineteen sixty-five, all the car manufacturers actually sent out little flyers that told you how to change your oil and how to dispose it, and same with antifreeze, and what they wanted you to do was dump it in the ground. That's how how manufacturers did it for years and years and years, and I think it's just silly now that we worry about two little oil drops, you know, and the earth does a great job of filtering, obviously, we don't want to promote it, but I think the MS four kind of, I mean, if they're gonna ever say that we can't have stuff on grass, I think that would be overstepping some some boundaries, so I think it's, I think the owner should have the right to do whatever they want with their property, uh, within reason, and I think that the winter stuff works pretty good, I mean, I I I actually like driving around and seeing people that actually try and keep the stuff close to their house, and you can tell that those people put in an effort to follow the rules, and I think that rule works pretty good. I always was under the impression that you could have anything you wanted as far as vehicles in your yard as long as it wasn't visible from the street. Is that something that we could do, or how does how does that work exactly? Because I think a lot of people kind of have that impression, if you can't see it from the street, then it's not against code.
Um, since we are complaint-based, if we can't see it from the street, then we don't know, I guess, but it is according to these rules is what we are, would enforce if we received a complaint.
Okay, so if, say if one of my neighbors has six vehicles in their backyard, so right now, it, obviously, right now, you can't have that, but if they were, if we were to change that you can park on grass, all they'd have to do is put it in a fence, around a fence around it, is that how that works then at that point?
I think you're asking for a problem, you're asking for somebody to have a junkyard in their yard.
Oh, right.
I think we need to keep the limitations.
Yeah, I was just curious about how that worked with the fencing, right?
I'm not gonna bend all these rules just because you think, because you can't see it from the street, what about part property behind you?
Right.
And they have to turn around and look at everybody's junk cars sitting in their yard.
Yep.
You're you're gonna open up a can of worms, you ain't going to want to go down that street.
I just want to know about what the fencing, I don't, I don't understand the fencing requirement, that's why I asked about the fencing.
Um, we do have screening requirements when recreational vehicles are parked on the side of a house, and so then it needs to be screened, um, as high as, which we allow six feet. And we only allow recreational units that are fifteen feet or lower or shorter than the primary residence. So, um, I know we've talked about that before, changing those screening requirements, because if you have a six-foot fence that's screening it along the side, oops, you can, you're not covering all of it up, but.
So that's screening required?
It does help for neighbors directly next to you.
That's only for RVs?
It's for anything parked on the side of your, so any recreational vehicle.
Because I know I Sandy County, that's how they do it, if you have it screened off, you can put whatever you want inside the screen. I was wondering how ours was, how that works, okay.
I have my two cents on this, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Green.
What'd you say? Uh, can you state your name and address further?
Kurt Hardy, one oh one Third Avenue Northwest. When I was looking through the codes, they actually got rid of that whole, what was it, five seventy-four or something, five forty-seven? What, with the screening, because I was talking about that with my neighbor, he parks his car out the back of the house, you know, I said, well, we could get him to put a fence up, screen it, you know, and then I got, I just kept reading, and then there's actually, they took that whole thing and it was in red, and and your, in the, and it was all done away with. You canceled the whole thing.
Not that I'm aware of, and I've been here for twelve years on this council, no screening's ever been removed.
It 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 was there, it's, I don't know if I can find it again, but it was.
It might have been highlighted, but it was never removed from there.
I said it was removed and it was all in red and I was.
It may have been removed from that section and moved to another section.
Well, it wasn't in, let's see, it wasn't, I just know it was, it was eliminated.
I thought.
I didn't care, but I saw, I just noted it.
I thought I remembered something about that a handful of years ago, too, that the screening was, people thought it was kind of ridiculous, if you have a fifteen-foot RV with a six-foot fence, what's that gonna do? So I I remember this did come up a few years ago with screening, I don't remember what the outcome was, but I wasn't on council then, but there was something to that effect.
But it was, yeah, it was, it was kind of funny to me that they just got rid of it, but yet it was still written in the code, but yet there's another section that has said it was all eliminated and taken out of the code, so.
Yeah, the section that we're reading here has it still in there, so.
Yeah.
So if it has been taken out, it hasn't been been done and and done to this section, so.
Okay.
But I mean, even where you're at there, I mean, I, so I guess technically, if he's got his pontoon on the side of the garage, then technically, he's got it even, I mean, it really does not need to be screened, I don't know if you guys drove past his his place there, but, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the way that it looks, the way it is now, and it's not screened and it's class five underneath it, so.
I think we should take a second look at that, um.
But then I I do get what Steve is saying, in the backyard especially, like.
Anywhere in the yard.
Yeah.
I mean, if you start, if you take away the limited amount of vehicles.
Oh, yeah, I think that, yeah, you gotta, yeah, right, yeah.
You've got it.
Yeah.
As much as you want to change things and do whatever you want to think you want to do with your property, all you're gonna do is you're gonna piss off a lot of taxpayers and they're all gonna start bailing from the city, and then you're gonna have a nightmare.
Yeah, I think the vehicle limits, I was thinking about that earlier and you just, it's just really tough to get away from that, so. No, I agree with you there, but.
Yeah, so we do require screening.
It is.
Anywhere a vehicle is parked in the rear or side yard of the property, so.
So, but I mean, like, if it's your work vehicle, you don't have to screen that when it's on the side of your garage, like you have it, yeah. But if it's a recreational vehicle, you would, but if you moved your vehicle in the backyard, then he would have to screen it, right? So, I mean, I'd be open to saying if you park it on the side of the house, it's maybe not necessary to screen it, but, because I mean, what difference would it make really if you had a pontoon sitting over there?
You look at, you look at how many people drive by that got campers. You know, travel trailers behind their, you know, whatever, they're parking them in your driveway, and it's not being screened.
Yeah, you're seeing it there, right?
I I guess I I don't, the screening part, I don't care, I just.
I think in the backyard, though, I mean, if you're staring into your neighbor's backyard, I mean, that's something about that I can kind of understand that it's doesn't really belong back there and it's kind of out of place, I mean.
So what are the screening requirements? Do we have, like, it has to be within a certain amount of feet, it has to just block the line of vision, is that?
It says a screening, sorry, a screening fence must be provided when the unit is visible from the adjacent properties and or the street when located in the side or rear yard, exceptions. It was removed.
So we did remove it in chapter two twenty-seven when we updated our ordinance on February twenty-first, and we had the discussion about allowing larger vehicles, including the bus, we did strike out those screening requirements. Sorry for the confusion.
Well, and I was gonna say, even this, what I have here in front of me, it looks like the bus, is this not the most up-to-date copy then?
No, it is not.
Okay, all right, because I was gonna bring that up, too, that it looks like we didn't change that, but I know that specifically that section we did, so. So the screening requirements have already been removed, so basically, then all we really need to change is say we don't require you to park on impervious surface.
It's just not, it wasn't codified yet, so that's why it wasn't.
Gotcha.
Updated, so I apologize for that and any confusion, and thank you.
Kurt, Kurt, you need a job at the city hall? No offense, there, I'm just, uh, all right, uh, so then I guess that part, so that's not even existent anymore, so then all we're really discussing is do we want to require impervious surface or not?
And do we want impervious or improved surface or non, or just impervious surface, I guess?
That should be clarified, because as we're having some discussions about class five, class five is technically an improved surface, so if you're allowing it to be on grass or class five, those are two different things, we should just clarify.
I think you should allow it anywhere.
I agree.
I mean, if you class, if you put class five down, that grass, it's gonna be brown forever versus if you're just parking your truck on it once in a while.
One thing I did think was helpful was the image that, uh, Councilmember Merrill shared with me, which was what the City of Blaine was doing, and they actually have a diagram that shows where you can park it, so if you had a vehicle on the side of your garage within, um, so many feet you could park it, otherwise you couldn't park it there, so it allowed for people to basically do what this gentleman has done and kind of put the truck right alongside, but you couldn't park like four vehicles on their whole side yard, it only gave you like a ten-foot swath maybe next to the house or something, if I recall correctly. I think that was easy to understand where you could and could not go if you were worried about people parking too much in their front or side yards on the grass.
Which, I mean, we talked about ten feet off of the driveway.
Right.
Already, I mean, we could say ten feet from the house, too, I suppose, and I know there is some language about how close you can be to the property line in the backyard, right, but it was five feet, I think, from the property line in here.
Well, whatever the drainage and utility easement is on your yard.
Yeah, right, sure, okay.
I think ten feet off of any sort of improved surface is reasonable, because then you only have so much, I guess, footage that you can put stuff on, I don't know.
So you want to say ten feet off of the the impervious surface for the driveway, ten feet, ten feet if it's on the rear side of the home, ten feet from the home.
Or garage.
Or garage, and is it in the rear yard, what do you think?
I think we need to put it to, uh, council the whole, because this is a way more complicated situation than just that. I mean, when we're talking about this gentleman and his girlfriend or wife that came in, who, I apologize, on behalf of myself anyway, as a city council member, for giving you false information, and and there was false information from staff, too, that night. I've argued, I've butted heads with the city about this over the years, many times, about being able to park on grass or gravel and that it's more environmentally friendly than parking on concrete or asphalt, and if you do your research, you'll find out, too, that there's a lot of information in EPA that actually says it's better to park on gravel or grass or sand than to park on concrete or asphalt and let it run into the storm system, um, and and that could be debated on a different day. We also have ordinances right now about the driveways being paved. I believe the reason this ordinance that you came in and were, um, upset about is was put in place by previous councils and you, and your girlfriend hit it right on the money, it is, I look at it as extortion myself. I mean, the city wants you to upgrade your property, improve it, improve the land value of your property so they can get their fifty bucks in extra tax revenue, that's the way I look at it, and I don't think our residents should, huh, be extorted, if that's the right word to use, in any way, um, to improve their property for more tax revenue. I believe in land use rights and property rights, and, um, if somebody comes home, a couple of years ago, somebody came home, parked their boat, parked their car in their front lawn so they could unload it and bring the stuff in the house, fell asleep on their couch, got a ticket the next day for parking on the grass, that's ridiculous, and then it was all under EPA. Well, you know, you can't, I'm not even gonna go into that, and as a council member, as a council, we have to be better informed, I guess we need to talk to staff more or have them define regulations better, because I feel really bad that you had the information that you had at the last council meeting, it should, it should have never been, should have never been said. The the grandfather, uh, laws that we have on the books about tarring a driveway, I cannot right now go to the city and ask them for a permit to do anything without tarring my driveway, it's still in the books. Um, I got eight hundred feet of driveway. I don't see, it it, another thing is, it it's actually, if we want to be a green city, we don't want to, to be a true green city, you wouldn't want to have it all paved, you know? So, you know, we're looking at doing alleyways, I I see no reason to do it if it's gonna interfere with, um, the property surrounding the alleyway to get assessed, to have that alley tarred just to improve their property value, it's my opinion, I think it's a discussion we should have in the future. But this whole EPA thing really upset me because we were very adamant and direct about why we had to have that ordinance, and I knew it wasn't true, and that's why I directed staff to put it in paper and put it in front of me, and they couldn't find anything, and I knew they won. So I don't know where this policy came up in the past, um, and I'm hoping we can change the way we do things and 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 protect people's property and their wallet a little bit better. I look at it as, I'm not an employee of the city, I'm an employee of you, you're the one who pays tax money to the city and and I do my job representing you. I don't represent the city, I explain what the city does in their ordinances. That's the way I look at my job up here, I was only appointed, um, but they might look at their their jobs a little different. But that's all I have to say on it, and I think we should look into this, the whole perspective of this, um, in the future.
No, I think that's really well said, George, I mean, I think that's, uh, yeah, you're you're a hundred percent right on there, so. Yeah, we do, I mean, there's a reason that I don't go out to events wearing the City of Iceni shirt, because I don't work for the City of Iceni, I work for the residents, we represent the residents here, so, um, no, it's it's really well said, so.
I do think this is a very big section of stuff that we could look at in multiple meetings, for sure. I mean, it's, I think the whole thing with impervious surfaces is kind of ridiculous, because like he had said and like I had said, they actually recommended you drain your oil right in the ground, because it does a better job of filtering the contaminants out than a public works does, that's, that's just how it is, even though it's sad, I mean, you don't want to promote that, but.
One reason we didn't bring this to committee of the whole was because we wanted to make sure that we addressed that issue for these guys that had that complaint.
Right now, yeah.
So that it was something that they could move on with and not have to worry about, so. If we bring it to committee of the whole, we're looking at another couple of weeks till we get to discuss it there, and then we gotta bring it back to council again, which, I mean, I guess, can, what can we, I mean, can we make some changes on this now? I mean, it's really just discussion now, but I mean, do we want to get get them started at least so we can vote on it at the next? I mean, I think that was, time was kind of of the essence for for the individuals that were concerned about it, so.
It has to go to planning commission first.
Okay.
Um, we've already missed the public hearing deadline for that meeting, um, so it would have to go to September, to the plant, so the second or the third Thursday.
So if we do bring it back to committee of the whole, at this point, are we, will we still be able to make it then for planning in that meeting? So maybe we we do have time to have more discussion on it then, okay. But what what, I guess specifically, were you thinking that we wanted to, I mean, you wanted to look more at even the driveway rules, so I see what you're saying there, so.
Uh, excuse me, I need to clarify.
Yeah.
Sorry, she misspoke, actually, um, this is within chapter two two seven, does not need to go to planning commission. This is for staff to make some changes to this and then post it for the required ten-day notice of an ordinance change, ordinance amendment, and then it would be brought back to council for changing of that. If, we would have to go through any zoning code if there are also conflicting.
Okay.
Um, parking requirements, but for the bulk, the parking requirements are here within city code.
Well.
And you're saying you'd like more time to discuss it so we can look at that grandfather, uh, rule saying that you have to pave your driveway, because none of this would apply if you didn't pave your driveway, right, so.
That, and I think we really need to take a hard look, um, at Tyler Street and Fourth Avenue. They're they're on a chopping block in the next four years, they're both gravel roads, they're both dead-end roads. They both have four to five hundred foot leads, some of them even more, um, to ex- asset, uh, assess, uh, excess sewer and water. If it if it's not a green issue and it's not a priority, or if there's not a state statute or or s- I I say we leave those roads alone. Right now, any one of those properties would be well better served replacing their well or their sewer than having an eighty to a hundred-plus thousand dollar assessment plus the cost of sewer and water brought to their house. That goes back to what I was saying about the city, the city can't play monopoly with other people's property. We we just have to stop that, that's my own opinion, and and that is trying to increase property values at the benefit of a property owner's wallet, it has to stop, in my opinion, and I think we need to look at that more. There's a lot of problems with those two streets that we, that the city annexed, um, and even if we go about our plan in the future to to put services down down there, I think we're gonna run into some legal problems, because the assessments are going to be more than the value of their land would increase, and if anybody challenged the city on that, they, the city would lose, so we should, we should look at that. I didn't want to bring this up until further in the year, because it was on my mind, but this whole EPA thing and made me decide to bring that up, too, tonight, it's just, let's figure out this gravel thing and make it make sense.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, at this point, a couple more weeks probably isn't the end of the world for what you guys are dealing with, it's kind of been resolved now, it seems like, and, um, you know, I mean, come on up.
Kurt Hardy, and I'm still at one oh one Third Avenue Northwest. Might be a question for.
I mean, this has all been closed now at this point, right, so. Couple more weeks is not gonna have any enforcement action if there's a complaint coming in.
Can I park back in front of my trailer, or is that, because the because the letter says I'm I'm to do something within the next twelve months, I'll still get another ticket for it.
We're not gonna take any enforcement action until council takes action, okay.
I can tell my neighbor is the same thing, so we're okay for it.
All right, perfect, well, then, yeah, I think, let's bring it back to committee of the whole and we'll we'll dig a little deeper into it, make sure we get it, we don't want to just pass this in a hurry just to get it done and then have to come back again and redo it, so I I think, yeah, let's let's, let's take a little time and look into some of those other things that, um, so what specifically, I mean, if you want to direct, is that what you were just gonna say, Josie, what?
Well, I think that staff should probably try to take a stab at what we hear, what the consensus is, because we also have things, which I know that I would anticipate the direction to be different from what we have posted for non-motorized vehicles must be on improved surface, that looks like we're gonna strike that or amend that section, so I think if staff can ta- kind of take a stab at drafting some changes in here, and then we'll do a verification of zoning code to make sure that there's nothing conflicting other than the definition, which has no impact on this, um.
The one thing that I did find is the requirement that Mr. Heeman is talking about, and that is not making any alterations allowed unless you do.
The driveway thing, so. So that will be a zoning, um, but for parking, um, we can make a draft to bring back to committee of the whole to see if that's the direction you're looking to go, if you if you desire.
I mean, if I have to abstain from voting on that, I'm fine with that, um, because I am definitely affected by that.
So am I, too, though.
Oh, jeez.
I don't think you have, I mean, all, everything that we do, we're we're all affected by, so I I don't think that's necessary, but. Okay, well, then, you you got enough direction on that, okay. Uh, so moving on to K twelve, the advisory street sign continued discussion, so, I don't know, Josie, did you get any more info from the county at all since we talked earlier, or no?
Excuse me, Mayor, let me just do a refresh on, make sure nothing came in.
Well, let me kind of give you, I'll give you guys the background on it while, uh.
I I do not have anything.
Nothing, okay, so, kind of been going around in circles on this, this is, you know, where we talked about on the, uh, population signs, kind of putting up a sign that says, you know, drive like your kids live here, or something along those lines to just, I mean, that was such a huge complaint when we were out, uh, well, when I was out campaigning, I mean, so many people were, you know, people are driving too fast on my street and I got. you know, people are driving too fast on my street and I got little kids out here and that kinda thing, so. But the county, county engineer originally said that he was opposed to him, and then I talked to some of the county commissioners, like I said that I would, and talked to the, the interim administrator up there and asked to get on the agenda to talk about it. And then they talked to the county engineer and he said, well, I never said I was against it. And apparently he, he misunderstood what they were saying and he thought we were talking about something else that Stephanie was working on for a message board, and so, so anyway, we're, we're not totally sure where we stand at this point. But he was saying, uh, I don't wanna butcher this, is it Mudcod, or, how do you say that?
Mutcod.
Mudcod, this is, M-U-T-C-D is some kind of a standard that they have from, uh, for street signs, and-
It's the MMUTCD, Minnesota Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Okay, but I mean, we're not really trying to control traffic there either, and so it's just a population sign, and we had other signs. The Lions were on there, the Green Step used to be on there, so I mean, I don't know that those standards would apply, so. Uh, so we're kinda waiting to hear back on it, but, I mean, at this point, I think, I almost should just do it and ask for forgiveness later, would be my opinion, but, um, but I think we'll just, we'll, we'll bring it back for some more updates. But it was on there in the hopes that we would have a solution to it beforehand, but we just haven't been able to get the, the straight answer yet from the county, so. Uh, so we're working on that, and then, uh, any questions on that at all, I guess? Okay, uh, so then moving on to what's gonna be K-13 was the discussion, and Elizabeth, this is why she's here, uh, was, maybe if you, you wanna just maybe come on up and kinda give people a rundown on it? You might have a, be able to do a little better than I can even, so. Okay.
Okay, so, we're trying to, when I say we, I mean the community. Troy Costalano, he's a performer, or he's been a, he was born and raised in Isani, worked his butt off in the music industry all of his life, and he's finally making a name in Nashville. So this summer, he's done four or five concerts in the area. Uh, he had one at our place at Northridge Winery, but we're in limited space. We can't have amplified music, he did more of an acoustic show. So we were trying to just kinda rile, rile up the community and get a, a concert going that the whole community could come out to and be invited to. So I know we kinda missed the boat for this summer. Um, next year is his fortieth graduation year from Cambridge High School. So it might be more appropriate that we try and focus on getting him here next summer sometime. Um, so I just, now I'm putting the bug in the ear to really put Troy Costalano on your planning for parks and recreation, for any, um, street dance, or maybe the rodeo, or wherever you guys feel it's appropriate, get in contact with him. Um, he did write his latest hit is about Isanti. Talks about the Rum River, Whiskey Road, growing up in the school district. Um, and it just, every concert he did this summer sold out within two weeks of the tickets becoming available. So the county is right now all riled up and, and cheering him on. He's getting some of his songs picked up by bigger artists than Nashville. So it's kind of a, um, seeing that, well, he calls himself this. I was the burnout kid that was the troublemaker in high school that everybody said, oh, you're not gonna go anywhere in the music industry. Well, he's mid-fifties now and he's finally getting something more than Minnesota Resco, um, jingle. So if you ever watch that commercial, Minnesota Resco, that's Troy Costalano.
I'm trying to think of how it goes right now, yeah. Minnesota.
So, um, we were gonna try and quickly reserve the park shelter, the band shell, but now we, we got with Thunder Brothers, they're gonna host him for his final appearance.
Okay, perfect.
And that puts him in the City of Isani, and that's what he really wanted, um, to end the summer.
It'll, it'll be packed.
So, but for next year, whoever takes care of your planning-
Yep, that would be, Jordan would be the, the guy to talk to about that, so.
And he is well aware, I know he's talked to you.
Okay, alright.
Just so you know, I've known Troy Costalano his whole life.
I do too.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, he's two years behind me, he was a troublemaker.
Well, you would, you would know he used to be one yourself, wouldn't you?
But he, uh, he's done very well for himself. I've known, like I said, I've known him my whole life, and, uh, as long as he's lived here. His sister actually did, I don't know if she still works at the liquor store, Melanie Costalano. She, uh, is actually a city employee at one time, I don't know if she still is or not.
I think she is, yeah.
I know she was at one point, but she's, Melanie actually worked for me at one point, uh, like I said, I've known that family their whole lives, so.
I think Troy would be a great draw, I know Troy personally too, and, uh, he is, you're right, he sold out everything. I love that new song, he, he wrote about Isani. I'd like, I'd like to see him get incorporated in something next year, that would be great.
You know, I've always kinda wondered how much, I think, I've heard we spend money for, I don't, I should have looked at this, but we spend money for the performers at the street dances and stuff, correct? And it seems like there's so many people in the community, I've had two bands reach out to me and, hey, how do I perform at the street dance? I'll do it for free. I mean, do we have to pay somebody when there's so many other artists that are local and would, would perform? Is that just a draw thing, or?
Sometimes it's a bit of a draw thing, it's also, um, what equipment people have. Um, we don't have the lighting and sound equipment that's required, so we just don't have the setup for that. So we require that to come along with them, so.
Okay. Have we ever-
It's in my ability sometimes.
Have we ever seen a, like, a difference in attendance based on what band we have? I mean, I go to, I go to the street dances, I, I never seem to notice a difference myself.
Did you come to it when Bad Jack was here?
I don't remember, I might have.
Bad Jack, it was packed.
Okay.
And he's from Isani.
So it does make a difference.
Yeah.
It does.
Dave Marine is from Isani.
Then you're kinda making an argument that the local guys might actually draw a better crowd.
They might, depending on their music, I mean, I, I, Troy's music isn't my style of music, I don't, it's not my thing, but I would listen to it.
If you guys, if you guys have him, you'll get his whole repertoire from-
Oh, I know, but I just say, I-
He was, he started out rock and roll, and then he, he kinda went the way of country, um, for, um, acceptability, but-
Yep, but no, that's just not my-
He, he couldn't, we, at our little place, he couldn't, he couldn't bring a full band, he, you know, just had to be acoustic. And because we don't pay the BMI licensing, he could only do his originals, he couldn't do any cover songs. Where he was playing in another venue, he could show off all of his talent and bring a whole band. So, anyway, I just wanted to get it out there. I'm not representing our little company, I'm representing the community at large that says, come on, let's bring our, our guy home and let him showcase his music and success.
Thanks for your input.
Yep.
And, and Luke, I love your idea, I think we should look at a local band, one out of the four we have each year, I think-
Or more, I mean, I'm just looking at it as a financial savings.
Well, I agree with that a hundred percent.
That's more so than anything, because I mean, it's, why spend money if people are still attending? I don't care who's there, I'll go to, I go to pretty much all, I don't care who the band is, I don't think people really go for the band usually. I mean, obviously, there's gonna be exceptions, like a local, obviously you're gonna get more. But I mean, is it worth the cost of paying if we don't have to? I mean, there might be locals that, like I said, there's two that have reached out to me that wanna play there and they'll do it for free, so.
I think there is some, I mean, when I was, when my parents were younger, I mean, Johnny Holm Band, I know was, and even now, I think he's still out there. Uh, but I mean, he would draw more of a crowd because he was Johnny Holm, right, so.
That's right.
But he was kinda local, was he kinda local St. Croix?
Yes, he was, he played at my house.
Did he?
Yeah.
Well, so.
I think you just dated yourself.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Just trying to think of something smart to say there, but I couldn't come up with anything, but, um, but yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, good for Gary, they've charged a, a pretty good, and they're coming up here on the twelfth, right? So, um, I think they have kind of a good following and a big name, so I think there's probably a balance there, but yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to getting more local people involved too, so. All right, um, moving on to the consent agenda, anything question-wise? Luke, did you have anything you wanted to mention there?
Motion to approve.
All right, well, let me think, uh, uh, the Mills Fleet Farm, they contributed a gift card for, uh, what was the gift card for? I forgot already.
Illuminate Isani.
Illuminate Isani, yeah, so. Um, so thank you to them for that, but, um, motion to approve from Councilman Lundin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Heman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero, we, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero, we are adjourned.